Uh, he's actually trying to figure out something. He pulled it up and he's just trying to figure out something else to put in there. Like that's what he's trying to get a.
Oh, what?
Take silhouette that we did, that the computer will trace. And then he'll just pop that in. He may, this is a big two corners, so he may leave the bow hunter and then rifle and then the elk in the ear.
Uh, so we'll begin with that. We need to discuss some items that we didn't get to on our budget retreats, so we'll continue where we left off there. And we'll turn it down here. Dave, you wanna?
Thank you. Uh, yeah, we have two main items to to bring up in the work session. Uh, they're related to the major projects and programs. That's where we were at the retreat that day. The first one is to continue seventy-three seventy-five project and just give a little view of the finances there and our our situation on whether we can. Pay for that or not? Can we afford it? Um, and then. After that is the recycling program. So those are the two, the two items we wanted to discuss today in the work session. So. First, um. Brett and I have talked a lot about this over the last little bit. Brett has done a ton of the work. So I'm gonna try to summarize and paint the picture and then Brett can answer all of the questions related to how we got the numbers and where they come from and all of that, but. Um, Brandon also has done a really good job, uh, engineer the project. And as you can see. The project is broken down by the individual funds that are responsible for the different sections of the project. So really, streets, water and storm drain are the three, are the three elements of the project like we've talked before. That's not news. Uh, as for streets, the transportation utility fee. Uh. Which is related specifically to street maintenance, um, has a section, a portion that it, the, that can be considered street maintenance. And then the rest of the streets department, so class C or other or streets funds there. Um, as you can see, it's quite a bit more for that street section of the project. And then the water utility and has a section and then the storm drain is broken down by what is eligible for impact fee. In the storm drain fund or what is just the utility rate. And so that's why that's broken down into those five different classifications.
Quick question.
Yes, sir.
Um, I didn't have time to look. Um, what street is this?
This is the seventy-three seventy-five project.
Did you read that part? The le- less, it continues from Lester Drive back down to South Weaver Drive.
Okay, so going over through.
Past the school.
Cutting down into.
Yeah, that new subdivision there, Castle Cove Phase One, I think, is the name of it. And it connected Lester Drive to seventy-three seventy-five. So now we're talking about widening that and making it safer for the, for better sidewalk on both sides of the road. And it, it goes and then bends and turns into nine twenty-five east, which connects to South Weaver Drive. Uh.
Which is the other side, bigger side of that too, is safer, but we also get our utilities. Finally connected from that side down into South Weaver.
Right, I mean, if I might, the reason, the, the reason that the, the project. Costs is so much is because we're doing. Uh, three major projects. Um, kind of all at once because it, it makes sense. Um, the need, the immediate need is to, to widen the road, make it a city standard road on seventy-three seventy-five and nine twenty-five. But in order to do that. We need to have storm drain. Um, so that we can drain the road properly, but there is no, no storm drain in that area at all. And so we had previously identified in our capital facilities plan, a project that would take. And hide it down South Weaver Drive and connect it up into, um, Kenny Meadows Drive. But that's a pretty long run. Um. And so that's why it's a big project, but it, it serves a lot of future needs as well. Um, we just haven't had a need for it until now. So because we need to, to widen the roads and finish those off, we've got to do the storm drain. And since we're in South Weaver Drive right there, we had also identified a water project. That is in that same area and it made sense to do that at the same time if you get it for that.
Just one quick question. You keep on saying that we have the need right now to expand those streets. What is that need based on? Is this just a project list that we're going down or what, what's the actual need that is forcing it?
Um, there was some concern when, when seventy, when Lester Drive. Would be connected to seventy-three seventy-five that. Um, you, you have city standard road up to that point, but then the, the, the road currently on seventy-three seventy-five is quite narrow. Um, and it would become the route that some people would take to get to school. And so years ago, when we had identified. That this would be a future project, we didn't know exactly when the need would arrive or when it would feel like it was crucial to do it. Um.
Well, and now we're up to crucial. This is, I know that it's been, it's been planned for a long time, but I'm, I'm just, I'm trying to understand the immediate crucial need.
That is really for you to determine if you think if, if it's crucial enough to.
Well, no, I mean, you should, you've got to have a, a reason for it.
Well, I think probably the crucialist need. That's a word is, uh, probably the safety of people traveling on that road to get to the school and kids walking. From that area to get to school. Where the road narrows down so much, so it's probably the safety.
So I don't know if you, if you remember familiar with, but once we, once Castle Cove went in, we widened that road.
Yeah.
People were coming in and saying, now we have kids walking down through, kind of a lot of cars. And we ended up adding gravel. Mark, Larson on that ground so they could walk off the road and not on the road. This is just the. That's, that's me, the crucial need. We needed another east-west. Now there's another path to get to it from the school, but the commuter road is not adequate to do that. I mean, this is a lot much bigger than, I mean, but it, I know why because, I mean, we were, we had this discussion a year, well, six months ago. About whoa, why did this, how did this go from a million and a half dollar project to a four million dollar project? Most of it, I mean, a huge chunk of that is storm drain. And water is, because it goes clear from nine twenty-five down to almost. Well, I mean, it's probably going down to what's that, Pannymetal Drive, like five hundred. I mean, it's going several blocks down South River Drives is the storm drain. Right. Which I was not aware of when, that, that's how far I had to go to connect to the only other storm drain we have in the city.
Yeah, have we had any problems with that storm drain?
No.
Okay.
We're already invested in. In the first portion of this project, when we purchased some property that was sold to us, uh, Peter, that Peterson's, um.
Mark Dayton.
Mark Dayton. They, they, they had to utilize as part of giving Lester Drive extended, and it did to this. Recognizing that we're gonna have up to standard road down to the non-standard, basically it's just a piece of asphalt on there. That was put in for a half dozen homeowners. Now it's gonna be kind of a more publicly used and it needs to be brought up to standard. There's gonna be stormwater collection, so we'll pull up the water and shed it in some piles and stuff like that. It doesn't have to go together. So we're gonna.
Yeah, I, I'm aware on that road.
We need to get all that asphalt in and it doesn't make sense to put the asphalt in and even my head will rip it all out to put it in a pipeline while it won't be able to hold over. So twice three minutes.
I guess what I'm not understanding though is that I can see Lester going down where it goes all the way down to the end there. Um, and that is a, uh, current road, not the, not, not the private road that.
Yeah, not.
Males have been used to live on this one.
It's gonna be built out like the private road, about that same size.
Yes, yeah.
The private road is kind of like a dead end, you know, it was a dead end, a little fair. It's also, if you look at the, the general plan, uh, seventy-three seventy-five actually goes through, continues to the west and goes out potentially. Uh, that will squeeze back to the side, but it, but it helps, it helps sort of other acreage out there that everyone else. But right now it has to turn onto nine twenty-five east, which is a clear indication. The right away for seventy-three seventy-five is bigger than nine twenty-five, that's gonna be a fifty foot right away. While seventy-three seventy-five is a standard.
Is it seventy?
Seventy foot, and that's what, that's what we told the people when this project was coming up sixteen years ago. They thought we were gonna have to buy out their house and stuff like that because we need, we couldn't get seventy in there. So there is some restriction of all that traffic having turned ninety degrees, it's going to get on South Weaver Drive and it's getting this one there on. But ultimately that's seventy, you can type, so it's continuing to do that. That's, that works for the guy that was definitely.
So this is what we're talking about right here. Yeah, so this is, this is the current road. And then this right here has just been finished, so all we're talking.
It's been finished to here.
Oh, because, yeah, was with the houses that's going in here.
Houses are going in here.
Oh, not the, okay, I see. That's still the open field. Sorry.
Then there's a new house going here, but that's a whole nother deal. This is just from here.
Yeah.
All the way down across.
Okay, so, but this right here is road.
And this is a road, but it's just asphalt. It's, it's, it's too late. I mean, what would you call it? Thirty feet wide?
Yeah.
Not even that.
Twenty-five.
It's a twenty-five, or a thirty, forty-eight asphalt.
Yeah, no curve.
No, no.
There, no curve.
No curve.
There's no standard.
It's thirty-six.
Thirty-six, there's probably, there's probably twenty to twenty-five.
Yeah.
And then they're going from here all the way down.
Okay, so, but this right here is road.
And this is a road, but it's just asphalt. It's, it's, it's too late. I mean, what would you call it? Thirty feet wide?
Yeah.
Not even that.
Twenty-five.
It's a twenty-five, or a thirty.
Twenty-five.
Forty-eight asphalt.
Yeah, no curve.
No, no.
There, no curve.
No curve.
There's no standard.
It's thirty-six.
Thirty-six, there's probably, there's probably twenty to twenty-five.
Yeah.
And then they're going from here all the way down.
Right, all the way down to the S curve over there.
Down here.
And that's what this project is, is to take that road how far? Or is this just?
It's, it's to take, to take it and match it like this all the way down here and then this will match what twelve fifty is currently going on.
Yes.
Then that'll match to here. But while we're doing that, it's the water line, the s- storm drain, the sewer line, everything is.
Okay.
So there's no storm drain out in, in this whole area.
Right, it's a significant project for storm drain in the area.
So did you show them that storm drain's going all the way down?
All the way down.
Which, which I understand is not. The best mode to go with, but, uh, we haven't had any problem with it so far. The amount of, um, new developments going up there. Um. It doesn't look like that's going to somehow overwhelm it. Um. I just don't understand that, that the immediate need for foreign.
From my perspective, there was an expectation when Lester connected to seventy-three seventy-five.
With who?
With us, a staff with council at the time and with the public and the neighbors, that there would be a lot of traffic getting to the school. Once it connected, that there'd be a lot of cars coming off South Weaver Drive.
And then we, and we checked to see how many cars is coming through. So we've got one of those little machines. How many is coming through per day?
Yes. I'd have to look at the, or I don't, I don't know it off the top of my head.
Okay.
Um, we put a speed trailer out there to count traffic and check speed. The first, I think, two weeks that people were there. Once the road opened for the first couple of weeks, there was no speeding, there was very minimal traffic, but we did it again. Um, just a little bit farther down on the other side of the, the new Castle Cove bend. Uh, on the Lester side and. This was two months later and we did it for a longer window and there was a lot of traffic and we continue to hear. From our neighbors that there's more and more traffic and more and more speed of the traffic that's taking it. Now it's a bus route, school buses are, are taking that to get to school rather than coming all the way down to twelve fifty. Uh, why did they do that?
Uh, you gotta remember, uh, part of the equation. To our urgency, maybe, to consider this, you know, it's all, it's a big fire. Their bodies under way and just went right up the freeway. There was a lot of, so we couldn't get our skids out of the school. Everybody, it was only one way in and one way out. And so the biggest issue was we need a second address, city address. So getting Lester.
We've got that.
Was to be able to find that second address. So technically it's connected right now, but it's not a safe. When I say this, it could be, and trying to make it a complete road rather than a half-assed job.
I think we've had. Three of the neighbors come in, addressed council and the public coming in. Wanting to know why we haven't done that yet. And that's, that's.
Your three neighbors on that road.
That's, that's, that's the difference.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we, we could, we could be a lot, lot cheaper. But we're gonna be ready to have a little backup to people's potential utilities and cost is, you know, is it worth it to? Spend a little dollar now only to throw that dollar away before it realizes it's full depreciation to put the piping there. That actually, the piping business, right now, that has to be sued. Um, sued, uh, the, the road has to be sued and the piping, so we're trying to front the piping to go on to, uh, the. It was right maximize their investment.
Right.
If, I mean, aside of should it be done with urgency of it, I mean, I guess that's a whole nother debate. My bigger question is. That, that's what our cost is, how we pay for it.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, I think that's.
That, that's what, yeah, that's why I'm trying to understand the priority of it because yes, it's a, it, it's a great one to have, especially for the people on the road. And there are some mitigating steps we can again take to help the children that are going on there and we can, I call the district myself and tell them, hey, don't send them down this same road anymore. It's not difficult. They, they're used to going through another pattern. But the question is, if we're doing four and a third million dollar, um, what are we gonna cut? Because that, that's really what it comes down to is if we want to do this road, we gotta cut something, either that or. Y'all are gonna raise the taxes.
That was gonna happen, the message I was hoping to make. This is the cost aspect, and I'd like to understand, and hopefully they get to, how much money do we already have in the bank? In those different accounts? How much do we yet need to come up with? They have made decisions. So how far are we out? If it were short money, how many years is it before we have the money to do the project? And is that worth waiting? Or is it better, you know what? Let's get the asphalt down because that's not a top priority. The other thing is, like, there's still some missing information that I should.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because that's why, I mean, we already, we didn't have it period before, and that's why it was postponed. And pushed a whole nother year. And so unless we.
Yeah, let's, let's get to that exact conversation of.
How much money is sitting in each of these funds? And just because it's sitting there doesn't mean that it all can come to this fund. And so Brett's done some really good work to say. You know, we gotta set aside X amount for, you know, each of these different.
Okay, but before you jump on that, Brett, um, if we did. Just the sidewalk, so we, we set up where the road's gonna go, just like we've, just like you're doing a whole new subdivision and everything. Usually run the curb and gutter down on the side, exactly where it's supposed to go. If we did that. Would we still need to or should do the entire storm drain at that same time because we're not touching the road or? Because.
If you just.
Yeah, look at the kids.
If you just did the sidewalk?
Yeah, curb and gutter, where it needs it all the way down.
You, you could in, you could install just the sidewalk. Um. However.
Yeah.
You would come back when you did it a second time and there would be portions of the sidewalk you could tear out to, to put in the curb.
You could add the drop structures into the storm drain of the curb.
Yeah, well, and on, and on, um. Uh, nine twenty-five. If you can picture in your mind what nine fifty looks like, the cross section of that road, curb and gutter sidewalk is right against the back of the curb and gutter. Um, if you pour curb and gutter first, it's very difficult to come back and pour, I mean, if you pour a sidewalk first. It's very difficult to come back and pour curb and gutter right up to that and have a match. Because the curb and gutter sets the grid of the road and then the, that, I mean. You, you should install the curb meter first, then you put sidewalk it next to that.
Curb and gutter is like eight, eight to twelve inch.
So on nine, nine twenty-five. Nine twenty-five, we would pour the sidewalk correct to the curb.
It was like just the same as twelve fifty.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a little bit narrower.
Yeah, no room for parking.
One nine twenty-five.
Yes, so the asphalt width would be thirty-five feet. But we can't do that. I'm just saying that if the sidewalk's right next to the curb, you can't do that.
Right.
You turn it off.
And that's.
Because of the approaches and everything else under the house.
Yeah, right.
I mean, I mean, I'm totally willing to try to dissect this as much as we can, but I.
I'm not as familiar as it is with all. You guys, um, so that's why I'm asking some of these naive questions because I didn't understand.
That's fine.
Let's, Dave, let's run through these funds real fast.
Okay, there's a lot. On this slide. Um, so don't get overwhelmed. We'll try to, we'll try to walk through it, um, left to right. Again, the same funds over on the left. Um, this is that cost estimate that was on the last slide, broken down at four point three W. This is, uh, when some of the homes were built, instead of putting in half of. The project or just curb and gutter and sidewalk in front of their house and have it not connect anything, they made a payment toward. The full project. So this has been sitting there in restricted funds. We have that available, hundred and twenty-five million.
Hundred point right there.
It's, 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 sorry, should I, should I, should I do it?
Let's do it.
We're taking seven thousand dollars. I can think of millions all day as we've been talking about this project, so sorry about that. Um, yeah, I wish. So you decrease that off and this is the total funds needed for each of those.
If the project was done today.
If it was done today, yes, today's cost estimate. Is that the actual cost of the project? Well, we don't know because we haven't bid it out, right? This is, this is the estimate for budgetary purposes. So then, this is where Brett has done some really good work. He's looked at each of these funds to see how much is available and, uh. It's not the total fund balance that we have in those funds. It's more about how much is available that we could put toward the project. However. Keep in mind. That doesn't necessarily mean we should use all of those funds. That's a conversation that we need to have, but this, this is the money that Brett feels is available that could go toward the project. So you can see in the, in the tub, we have in our fund balance, half a million dollars. That covers, right? So do we have a deficit? No, we don't. We're, we're plus two hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. Um, in the streets, we did add the two hundred and some odd thousand dollars of ARPA into this line item. It could have been put anywhere, but just for calculations, we put it there. Um. So we need one point four million. We have one point two five available. Again, including that ARPA, so we have a deficit, yes, of approximately two hundred thousand dollars there. It's important to note the differences in the tough money and this money for streets. Uh, tough money was specifically designated as maintenance only. And what is currently asphalt that becomes asphalt again would be maintenance. But any of the widening and adding of structure and whatnot, even though it's still streets, is considered. New streets and that's why it's not lined up for that tough money. Um, and you could follow that same logic down with these other ones. Water utility fund needing eight hundred eighty-two thousand. Having available out of our two million dollar fund balance to keep a hundred and eighty days cash on hand. Um, and other project costs. Uh, meaning specifically the bond payment for the public works facility, um. One-time money at about five hundred ninety-six thousand. Uh, so there's a deficit there in the, in the water. Um, that also. Needs to be said that it's, it's considered one-time money, right? We're talking about that. But the bond payment is an ongoing project cost over time and so we're trying to factor that in as well. Storm drain impact fee, we have no money sitting in the fund balance in storm drain impact fee because. Um, the storm drain impact fee is still paying back when, uh, phase one of South Bend's drive was put in. Again, not necessarily our timing, but when that went in, um, the storm drain. Impact fee needed to pay back money to the storm drain fund because there was not impact fee at the time, but. The project was eligible for impact fee. And so that happens every once in a while where you essentially prepay your impact fees and as they come in over time, you use those to. Kind of pay back the fund that spent it upfront. So we still have, um, I think it was one more fiscal year, maybe more years. Depending on how many impact fees come in to pay that project off. Um, so there's that, that deficit. Um, and then the storm drain utility by itself, um, total six hundred and twenty-five needed. We do have storm drain fund available there, um, and so there is, there's not a deficit. However.
At least there's funds in there.
However.
Time when we have more funds than that.
No funds as our. I would say that makes staff super nervous, that only have eighty thousand dollars there.
Yeah.
And no way to make obligations in the future, like whatnot, so.
So I have a question. Does this include the hundred and eighty days of cash on hand or?
That is removed out, yes, so.
Right. So when you say that eighty thousand makes you nervous, eighty thousand is what, that is not what is left in the fund. It's that plus the hundred and eighty.
To, in addition to.
Right, yes.
Keep, keeping that hundred and eighty days cash on hand. But that's what he ended up with.
For the storm drain, a hundred and eighty days cash on hand is like two hundred and forty thousand dollars for the water. It's significant. So.
So can I ask you a question again?
Yeah.
Chuck. Um, how long does it take to refill it back up? Because the three that are gonna be zero. What is? What's the timeframe that will take for storm drain impact fees to bring us back up to?
At our, at our current rate of storm drain impact fees, what?
Um, storm drain a year brings in about thirty-five to forty-five thousand a year. But to bring that back up. It will, will take a while. It, it, it paid off their portion is twenty, almost twenty-seven years. At that rate.
If we continue to.
We went, I mean, we looked at this a year ago, ago. We were, and, and again, it wasn't Brett doing the, the calculation, so it may have been give or take, whatever way.
Yeah.
We only had like one point two to go to work this project. And so we kicked it, it, it's been kicked down the road. One other fiscal measure with everybody here, we're waiting, having the same discussion. We moved it. We've not, not.
But the bond payment is an ongoing project cost over time and so we're trying to factor that in as well. Storm drain impact fee, we have no money sitting in the fund balance in storm drain impact fee because. Um, the storm drain impact fee is still paying back when, uh, phase one of South Bend Drive was put in. Again, not necessarily our timing, but when that went in, um, the storm drain. Impact fee needed to pay back money to the storm drain fund because there was not impact fee at the time, but. The project was eligible for impact fee. And so that happens every once in a while where you essentially prepay your impact fees and as they come in over time, you use those to. Kind of pay back the fund that spent it upfront, so we still have, um, I think it was one more fiscal year, maybe more years. Depending on how many impact fees come in to pay that project off. Um, so there's that, that deficit. Um, and then the storm drain utility by itself, um, total six hundred and twenty-five needed. We do have storm drain fund available there, um, and so there is, there's not a deficit, however.
At least there's funds in there.
However.
Time when we have more funds than that.
No funds in our. I would say that makes staff super nervous, the only have eighty thousand dollars there.
Yeah.
And no way to make obligations in the future, like whatnot, so.
So I have a question, does this include the hundred and eighty days of cash on hand or?
That is removed out, yes, so.
Right, so when you say that eighty thousand makes you nervous, eighty thousand is what, that is not what is left in the fund, it's that plus the hundred and eighty.
To.
In addition to.
Yeah, right, yes.
Keep keeping that hundred and eighty days cash on hand. What's what do you end up with?
For the storm drain, a hundred and eighty days cash on hand is like two hundred and forty thousand dollars for the water, it's significant. So.
So can I ask you a question again?
Yeah.
Chuck. Um, how long does it take to refill it back up? Cause the three that are gonna be zero. What is? What's the timeframe that will take for storm drain impact fees to bring us back up to?
At our, at our current rate of storm drain impact fees, what?
Um, storm drain a year brings in about thirty-five to forty-five thousand a year. But to bring that back up. Will, will take a while, it, it, to pay off their portion is twenty, almost twenty-seven years. At that rate.
If we continue to.
We went, I mean, we looked at this a year ago, ago. We were, and, and again, it wasn't Brett doing it, the calculation sort of may have been give or take, whatever way.
Yeah.
We only had like one point two to go to work this project. And so we kicked it, it, it's been kicked down the road, one other fiscal measure with everybody here, Wayne, having the same discussion. We moved it, we've not done every project because of this, cause we're trying to. Get these balances up to where we can afford it.
Right.
How much has it increased from last year to this year, the, the estimated amount?
It's almost, it's almost double.
I will say just as. You, you all know this, right, but in, impact fees are totally subjective, right, to what the rate of, of development. There's been a lot more interest in development here this spring, whether that actually transitions and in, into anything that develops. Into lots, we do have the Riverwood subdivision that is currently going and so there are few impact fees that will collect through that. Um, in previous years, there's been very. I mean, and you guys would know, but I mean, if you've just looked at the building permits that were polled. They've been, it's been pretty low, so.
Yeah.
That might increase a little bit, but who knows?
So then the question. It comes easily after that, are there other pots of money that we could try to draw from? And so you ask yourself, well, we've got a capital projects fund, maybe we could pull from. We have a general fund, fund balance that maybe we could pull from, whether it's right or wrong is still up for debate, but. Are there other pots? Well, we.
I take it one sip further back in that day, sorry to interrupt you. What revenue sources do we have that we can apply to the project? The property taxes, one, sales tax, it's probably logical, one. Uh, we don't have any control of that, but it's been, it's been over two million, two point one million the last three years. Uh, that's what I have to check, so what's available in staff's mind of that, we've been putting two hundred twenty-eight thousand aside or in, it's a counter to this fund. We have a main day or to build that up. Uh, have you ever locked all the rest of those monies in past budgets? Or is there been, it means like if you get access, but you always, hey, Steph, buy online because we get more like sales tax rates. And, um, what my point being is, it's, it's also much, what do we have is, where's the money coming from, where do we start earmarking that money, unless they return. Um, before we do the project. Or that they return is three, four, five years out, is that too far for the town council to, to absorb it, to be seen, you know what? We need to put the blacktop curb gutter in right now, I mean, we'll just have to try and put the storm drain in and water it later, or the most money's right here. That's what I, that's what I don't wanna do, but that's what I'm kind of essentially may have to do. Unless we're comfortable just waiting by some years and do the whole project at once. Cause I don't think you can do that project now, I think you could do it next year and. Given the storm drain impact fee being a million dollars short. No, quite amazing.
It's hard, it's hard to see us finding money to do this soon.
Yeah, I agree. I think we're at least. We're trying to have ten more months, maybe even longer, years out before I think.
Unless we, unless we found a solution to do it. Oh, wait. I mean, I, I mean, it's hard not, it's not the whole.
I don't wanna drain these funds down.
No, no, I mean to do it without doing the whole project.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Maybe, or if you can, yeah, I don't know.
Uh, somebody needs to be done. I. I don't know what that is, but we can't just let it be the way it is.
Brendan, what does that look like to do surface and not do storm drain?
Well, I mean, right now it has circle surface, so. I, I don't think. I wouldn't put, I wouldn't make the road any wider. If you're just really trying to just do the bare minimum, I probably would try to put in like a, a sidewalk, just knowing that you'd be carrying a good portion of it out here. And unless, unless you think that, why are asphalt?
You would want to limit that to one side of your right away to start with, so you're not impacting those people twice.
Right, you, but you. You potentially are because. You, when, when, when you build something, you build from the center out, right? And then as you match into their yards, you can tie back into the driveways. And you, if you're starting on the outside end, there's just a good chance that you'll, you'll. So I don't know, if you felt like there's a need to do anything right now. We can, if the gravel is fine, you can leave that. I, I think you'll spend less money in the long run if you just wait until you can do it all.
Yeah, well, I think, well. I'm good with. Improving the gravel. From what, I mean, we kind of went in there just before school, started increasing. Pathway graded it, gravel down and. And we got comments that they appreciated that, but I think if we went in and really did a nicer job. And put down some material, it's gonna pack together and not turn the mud when it gets wet that the kids can walk on. And, you know, I think if we're careful that way, I think that would work for a few years.
I think asphalt would true. You could even asphalt a solid reply, just a five foot wide.
Because you could asphalt and then just tear it out.
Cause otherwise, how do they get it so they can walk on it? And. I, I don't know, I, I.
Just, well, I just, just so that you go into it, the, the idea that likely it, whatever you put in there is.
It's gonna get rid of that.
Yeah, it's just a bad thing for.
But it's that.
Asphalt, not to the city standards, I'm talking to.
No.
A cheap run of asphalt down, but you have someone run a four foot, five foot wide strips, maybe the solution, but. Maybe we just need to look at that option. That was maybe the whole conversation, I don't want to be the two levels, we're talking about this project right now and. Some years, you know, come up with the money, and that come all these major capital projects that are still doing out there that we're not even getting any thought to. And by the time we do, it'll be reacting again. So I'm gonna come back in seven years now, like I said, maybe still need to get that ten-year cash flow on our capital risk risk. So don't get surprised by this part of the wall, this thing, this part of this thing, especially when we have these utilities. From my perspective, utility is probably a very high priority for cities, you need to throw this space, store water, sewer, those type of things. I think the others aren't important. You started talking to your tank replacement. You know, we got the west, west tank, plays your top, and, and things that use your zone, just, you know. We're talking, this is great, but the national plan here right now, we don't have the money, won't have the money for the full budget for several years and guess what, guys? If there's a million, a million dollars of storage or something, we're up there, you can probably talk to two and a half, three million. Just to replace that all the way to the new one. You know, and that's money we have inside the earmarking for that. You did step a half million, half million instead of fifteen years, well, we're four years into that, five years into that, so we got a decade to move forward. We either gotta pay them again, hopefully in another fifteen years it won't replace it, cause demand's out there, so. Anyway, my point being, nothing special here is, you've got bigger issues with money, this is just one of them that's more ridiculous.
I think that's exactly the reason why we all feel uncomfortable using the money that's sitting there. Because it has other needs and there are. Even just the idea of a rainy day fund, right? If, if that's your first thing to do is just set aside a hundred and eighty days. Operating expense and make sure that we never go below that, right? That's step one and it pulls into question some of those. And that, and we're never gonna do that, we're not going below that in our fund balance.
We have that D forecasted, we take up with a revenue request, there's others, you know, leave that. Be a five, ten or fifteen year term that is, and we're gonna look like fools and continue to react to these things, so coming up with a plan, an argument. You know, for the people's sake, here's what the needs are, here's the title, here's the years, here's the cash flow projected. These are the revenue sources, it's how we're gonna have to do it.
Brett, Brett was looking into more of that. I mean, you had to make you speak to that better, I mean, there. We're trying to boil it down to how much money could we have for this year, right? And we're deficient for this year, right? Can we afford it now was kind of the question you're answering, but. The answer to that question is related to what are the needs ongoing and, and that was looked at, it wasn't just ignored.
Yeah, we did, we did spend a lot of, I spent a lot of time looking into. Kind of projections on, on revenue versus our current debt and then adding this as a one-time debt and how that. Impacts a hundred and eighty days and it was interesting to, to see. How each one of those funds were, were enacted based on either removing the project or adding the project in to see where we were. Um, and, and that's kind of where we feel. As a staff that right now, we can't do it, when, when is a good time to do it?
You're not comfortable, right, right now.
I, I don't feel comfortable.
So where's, where's that feeling about with Mary and Blair, we suggested, I mean, our topic is just a, a long way. Get us by so they could be plowed, so they're safe walking through there and we wait to camp.
Is the main concern pedestrians on the side of the road or is the main concern narrow road with traffic and needing it to be wider?
I think it's pedestrian.
Mine is pedestrian.
Pedestrian because they're walking out in the road, I mean, it's, it's wide enough for one car and there's not. Usually a lot of traffic going both directions, it's coming out of school. Sometimes the day you need to camp.
Oh, if that's the case, I mean, normal length is ten feet, so if it's twenty-five feet, do we need to just red stripe down some of these areas? So that we have a full functionality of the entire road, so we're not worried about cars crashing into it. Until it gets, yeah.
So then a center stripe?
It couldn't be.
A center stripe, but.
Or even a red stripe.
Yes, I, you know, say no parking on the outside over here or something, I don't know there, um, yeah.
I would be comfortable with that, we can come up with some sort of plan for a walking path.
Yeah.
And maybe we need to.
Yeah, we can bring back your cost estimate for a path like that, I mean, you could, cause one other thing you could, you could entertain would be to just do a, a, a fairly robust. You know, road based gravel type of a. Uh, trail, maybe Mary, what you were talking about, like, um, you know, just improve it really nice. And if that was, and then if that wasn't good enough, then you could, then you could pave on top of that. Um, you'll have to have some base underneath any kind of asphalt you do, so you could just start with that before you pave it, maybe and just see if. If you feel like that's good enough, or we could just go straight to asphalt.
Brendan, what was the estimate for this project done? Did that last year or?
Well, um. That, well, I think the previous estimate that you may have seen didn't include the, the, I don't think it had the water in it. Um. And it didn't have, it wasn't designed.
So this is updated for this.
So this is ba, this is based on an actual design with all of the, the line.
So you, you've done the design.
Yeah, so this, this, if you had the money, we, we could go bid it out right now.
The shovel way.
It is.
And that was the direction after last year was, hey, we've got a high level estimate, but to really know, we need to design a project. So we said, let's design it this year, we did that and so now we have this estimate. Well, I think staff can kind of take that direction from here, try to look at options to improve the area now, but not at the level of this entire project.
What would it take to get, sorry, um, what would it take to get what Wayne's talking about? Basically, a, here's the capital funds that were going to be needed, rough estimate, I mean, even if we just set a dollar amount. Saying, okay, well, we need to have, you know, five million put away for these projects without knowing the exact amount. Looking at our current debt ratio, which I think on the, was six percent, is how much we're servicing our debt?
Very handsome, yeah.
It's, um. Would, how, how big of an increase would it have to be to within, what do you think, ten, five?
Ten, ten, five would be wonderful, ten would be preferred, yeah, so you can have longer.
We, so five to ten idea, because if, if we're having these kind of problems, we're having this situation. Looking at the broken window analogy, we can't just let them keep on getting kicked down the road. Um, but we also can't rub from beater to steel from. All the bad qualities.
Yeah, um, it's, it's not from beater, it was steel for hell.
Thank you. But it, it sounds like it's something that we do need to do, so even if we had a five and a ten year projection, as you guys are working on that. It would be good to know, especially if we're going to have to increase, we have a framework for that. Um, putting in projects that are on the capital facilities plan and even the general fund ones, like we. We have a couple of different tools that we're looking at in, in relation to that, but to put that into something that's maybe a little bit more digestible for. Uh, for the council to look at and kind of see, um, we can do that, it would take a little bit of time just for them, you know, budget process and whatnot, but we can.
Take, take the, the major ones, like are coming down the road in the next five to ten years or whatever that we see, I mean. That's gotta start now, I mean, look how long it took us to. It's been ten years or eight years for a public works building, I mean, that, it, it, that's a long time ago, we started trying to figure out how to save money, it might be some ground even. And if we gotta do a water tank. And all that kind of stuff, I mean, if you don't, if we don't start planning now, we'll be bombing it.
Well.
Cause it'll be an emergency.
Yeah, I, I agree a hundred percent and our admin finance committee has spent a little bit of time talking about reserve funding and the difference between. Project funding and planning and setting aside versus emergency money, right, and the rainy day fund and basically. All the money we have right now does not meet the rainy day thresholds that we have talked about being a target. So if we did nothing, we still need to save some money for, to feel comfortable about our rainy paper. That, that's where we're at financially, we, we are not making enough money to. Save for big projects, we, we just don't have that revenue, so.
It's documented, so that's, we probably didn't completely bang with it, I think.
Yeah.
We got, here's what we're trying to accomplish, and as they start looking at the audit and the other reports and somewhere, say, well, hey, you got excellent, I'll just sit right here. Yeah, that might look that way, but the big picture, here's where that money's being spread out and trying to avoid, you know, I would say property taxes, we just had it, right? Exactly, I think if you do that, we get more, um, happening, um, small.
We can put something together that's a little bit more visual that way and, and can help paint that picture, uh, more long-term, yeah.
Is it recycling?
Okay, let's, uh, let's go to recycling, for a quick kind of. Yeah, it might not be quick, but here's the.
I, these slides are very sophisticated, so thank you.
Yeah, I feel like, uh, uh, some of the numbers have updated just a little bit, so, uh, but the format, I changed it just a little bit so that you can. Uh, I just wanna give a basic foundational information, we can talk about potential rollout. And then I wanna go over what the committee has discussed, review the different options that, that have been looked at and then get into the summary, so. We'll kind of go fast so we can get to the summary slide, that's the meat. This is our current situation, alright, our current situation is, uh, fifteen dollars and forty-seven cents a month for first garbage can. Nine eleven for a second garbage can, and if you choose to recycle, you're going through ACE and it's fifteen dollars a month. Those are the three, you know, ACE is our recycling company, not through the city, Robinson hauls the, hauls it. And takes it to Wasatch Integrated, which is the tipping fee, so you can see hauling is through, uh, Robinson Waste. Tipping fee is Wasatch Integrated Waste Management District. And then the city administration, right, for billing and, and all of those things that go into that. And then a cost for can maintenance, we don't have that right now.
So a person with two cans paying twenty-four, thirty-eight.
Yes, a person, yep, a person with two cans, twenty-four, fifty-eight. Rolling out, uh, this was one of the questions that came from the last conversation. Uh, Robinson Waste, in the number that they gave us for hauling, included a fee of two dollars and fifty cents a month. Which included purchasing the cans, assembling all the cans and delivering them, right? We had talked about how do we do that with our own city staff, well, Robinson's rate included all of that, so Robinson would essentially roll out the program on our behalf. Um, and the rates that we've looked at before included that, they just broke that down for us to say two fifty of it went to that program.
So just for reference, when they factored out how much it would cost our city staff to do that, it was over thirty thousand dollars. And it was three solid weeks of doing nothing at all but garbage cans. Not water, not, nothing, but garbage cans.
And you'd think we even had enough staff, the last time we had scouts and.
No. No.
Everybody else doing, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, she said a minimum of three weeks just to go deliver everything.
Just three hours, you can go deliver, that's okay.
Right.
But the two fifty is included.
Everything.
Right, but.
There's what, three thousand heads in the city?
Right, twenty-one.
Twenty-three hundred is not replacing.
Yeah, that number will be seen up, so. Okay, so the question I've had it though is, the two fifty, is that done after a year or does that just keep on going in?
Three years, and when you do the math on all the cans, so instead of paying, you basically, we end up paying them.
so instead of paying, you basically, we end up paying them twenty-eight thousand dollars to finance, buy our cans for us, put it all together, deliver them. We pay, we end up paying them around twenty-eight thousand dollars above what we would just pay to buy the can ourselves. But we can't go deliver them, assemble them for twenty.
No, I just explained to you where I'm.
I just.
I was, we were very, very surprised that they actually said all of that was included as in the two fifty. I thought that was a very, very.
Two dollars and fifty cents to just put a fine point on it, that drops off at the end of the three year contract.
Just let me, yeah, sorry, make it clear, two fifty, three thousand, so two thousand homes, twenty-three hundred, closer to about that, two thousand homes. So we're talking five thousand dollars a month, so sixty thousand dollars a year, hundred eighty thousand dollars intercollected in the cans and and added costs. Yeah, ends up being like ninety, end up paying like ninety dollars for the can, or we'd have paid sixty-five dollars for the can. Is what the number of people.
This still allows us to be eligible for the fifteen dollars per can rebate, right? We talked about that program. Um, even though Robinson would purchase them and deliver and all of that, we would own the cans at the end of the three years. We'd qualify for the for the rebate.
And we'd keep the rebate cycle running.
We keep ours.
It's ours.
So that doesn't take into account rebate either, that.
Number.
And then.
Eligible for the rebate, we have to have our program out. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes. Yes.
So we talked to Robinson about when it would start, this reminder, or I've said it before, this is an every other week pickup. It would start the week of Monday, June thirtieth, cause June thirtieth is the Monday, July first is that same week. So they would start it at pickup. Picking it up.
Yeah, in the month.
They would roll it out to homes.
Years before.
Yeah, before that. Okay, so let's look at what happens, uh, if we do nothing and we just stay exactly how we are. Um, there are rate increases on our hauling fee and our tipping fee. And then this municipal utilities committee has talked about the need to not lose money on our second garbage can. And right now, the city just pays for all the cans when there's replacement and whatnot, when we just buy the whole set. We do charge residents sixty-five dollars when they call and need their can replaced. It's a one-time charge when they, when a resident calls. Um, and we talked about making it so in order for the city to just provide that can to charge eighty-five cents a month as a can maintenance and replacement cost. So then residents wouldn't have to worry about a charge at sixty-five dollars a can. It's essentially a ten year, a ten year payment at eighty-five cents.
It kept us from having to go to the general fund every other year to we buy cans. We was a hundred and twenty-three thousand or something that we spent on a truckload of cans.
Yeah.
Which is hard to come up with.
Stuff here on the right, let's talk about it real quick. I did find out from, uh, Robinson Waste, the potential unknown COLA. And they just base it off of a of a CPI that's related to garbage. It's four point three percent this month or this year. So the hauling fee right now is five dollars and sixty-one cents per month. So as of July one, that four percent increase, it would go up to five eighty-five. Um, so again, it's status quo, but our status quo actually adjusts and shifts as of July one. So we're putting what that would be as of July one with those changes. The tipping fee at Wasatch Integrated, the mayor brought up the idea of their board adding a dollar more than what it is. Uh, right now, it's seven dollars and twenty cents, uh, per can per month. And that would go up to eight dollars and twenty cents per can per month. I think the update was they pushed it back from July one to January one, but they're still planning on doing that.
And have they given us some numbers that show why these have to be increased?
Why they're increasing the tipping fee?
Yeah.
They haven't.
For residential.
They haven't had a tipping fee increase since twenty sixteen is one of the reasons why, probably the main reason why.
So we got commercial.
I would raise.
Commercial, yeah, I think I'm sure they have on a commercial. I know they've had different increases there. But I think the commercial then increase is more than the dollar.
So that's good to know. Now we're gonna look at three different options related to having a citywide recycling program. And the changes or the differences between those options are related to how many people opt in and participate. The more people participate, the cheaper it is per person. So rollout option one is people actively have to opt in. The expectation is that less than fifty percent of the people would actively choose to opt in. That's that's an assumption that we're making based on.
Basically what we have now, yes, opting.
Yeah. We just be taking it over from ACE, doing it ourselves, turning it into an opt-in.
We have three hundred people roughly going in there.
So now you can see first garbage can, second garbage can, and then what that recycling cost would be as.
And a person had two, but they said, all right, I'm gonna opt in and get rid of my second can and just do recycling. They don't have to pay seventy fifty-six to get it to you.
Correct, yeah. We'll get to a slide that that makes it a little bit easier to see that, but yes. Um, sorry, no, you're good. There's a lot of information to go on. Um, so that's the under fifty percent. Then you look at if we had fifty to eighty percent. Well, there's different hauling fees and things related to that as well. Um, you can see what that would become. Notice that the only change really is the hauling fee. Just doing quick back and forth toggling, um, that's the, that's the difference. It's just hauling fee changes based on number of people that opt in. Well, actually, this is important to note that we'd be doing an opt-out process. But assuming that low number or a high number of people opting out gets us to fifty to eighty percent. Based on the studies and the experience of other cities that roll out recycling, that do an opt-out style, they are between eighty-five and ninety-five percent take rate typically.
Uh, that equates recycle.
It's recycle, yeah. It's stay in and recycle. So this is the most likely scenario if we chose opt-out. Um, just based on other cities' experience and those numbers.
One other cities. It'll look to Blovens, um, and Salt Lake County and what they're doing on it. Um, and they're still finding to get the take rates.
When did we talk? Was it Robinson Waste or was it through?
Was it Wasatch?
Wasatch Integrated.
I I can tell you what they did in Kaysale. They did opt-out, like where I live. And so I just got a can and I had never recycled before. And I I think at first I was a little bit like, well, I'm not sure if I'm gonna do this. But because I got a can, I just started and tried it and, um, and now I love it. So my 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 experience was, or I think that you would probably have a similar experience here. There'd probably be some people who've never done it. But when given the opportunity, they would, they would, they'll, they would try it.
I know Washington City did the same, Kaysale did the same, I believe they said through Pice is doing that Lathan, I believe, but then they've gone back and forth on opting and opt-out. They've gone back.
I think Wasatch Integrated went nationwide and like they're studying.
I know Syracuse was rolling their top this month.
Most of our information on the percentages of take rates came from Wasatch Integrated.
Yeah. And those are numbers that I've heard even ten years ago. They said that if you do opt-out, you're typically in the eighty-five percent plus range. That that's kind of how the standard opt-out process gets as far as the numbers. So there are assumptions.
And the reason why we're doing this, or they're doing this, is uh, to raise money, to not have.
Along the life of.
Not raising.
No.
They're not, they're not, they're actually giving us a discount to do it.
Um, so the only thing that can be recycled, even everything that we do here is type one and two, and then clean, clean cardboard, gas and wood, or glass and aluminum.
No, no glass.
So we're not doing that one up here.
They're trying to get to that, but they're not yet.
So literally in my household, the only things that are one and two are the water bottle and the milk jug. Everything else.
Oh, yeah, cardboard.
Cardboard, if it's got any organic on it, so like a pizza one, can't do it.
And all those Amazon boxes.
Yeah, the Amazon boxes are wood. And that would be, that would be one of the things that go in there, but I with the amount of garbage that's going into it, I have a hard time seeing how that's gonna slow anything down. Do we have something from them that says, looking at the numbers, if we're doing this program, we're not going to do another increase in the next ten years for?
You're gonna have an increase every year.
To the garbage side of things.
So the garbage side. I don't know about.
We do every year.
Yeah.
Where, where we're headed with that one.
But I thought that was for pickup, not for the waste management. They have to make a change on giving for tipping hasn't been, but the rest of them have all had an increase. So it would be ways, it would be the transport that's.
That we have increases.
That's where you're gonna.
The hauling has increased, yes.
That's where your increase is gonna.
So that's where they're still gonna be coming from. It's not gonna change as long as we're at that pit.
We did, when we talked to Robinson Waste, he did talk about locking in the rate for us.
That's great.
Not increasing it very much.
And we got that back again.
Yes, and we'll get to that real quick. Let me do the comparison. I think this is, this is the payout slide, um, where you can see the differences. I added, so this comparison, comparison rate to rate for each of those options. Resident options. Think of it as, do you want one can of black? Do you want two cans black? Or do you want to add a recycling, right? It's kind of from the lens of if I'm a resident, what am I gonna do? And so you can see just how that compares across the board. Again, this is the status quo rate of if we do nothing as of July one. If we did the opt-in program, well, what's the savings of this opt-in program from the status quo? Is there any savings? Well, you can see how if we did the opt-in at this level.
There's being opted. It would be a savings for the people who signed up because you're gonna, you'd be going from fifteen dollars down to what's our, what's our single blue can? Nine to eight dollars.
So somebody right now, there's somebody right now that is recycling with ACE with one garbage can is paying thirty forty-seven a month. The fifteen forty-seven for the one can and the fifteen dollars a month for ACE. That will become thirty-two fifty-six out of July one with the rate increases that we're looking at. So then they would be saving six dollars and twenty cents. If they had that savings.
I couldn't see that.
I know, I'm in the way.
You're, sorry.
This, the savings from the status quo is the, is the data that really makes a difference there. And then you can see what that looks like for the fifty to eighty percent and then the opt-out eighty plus. There is some significant savings for people that are currently recycling through ACE that would ship to a city program. They they would save quite a bit of money. Um, this is the number that really matters, I think, is the one garbage can, one recycling. Cause Wasatch Integrated Waste Management District says, sure, do an opt-out program at the beginning, but once new members or new residents move in, just do a bundled rate with one can for black and one can for blue. That would be the rate that we would have.
That's cheaper for somebody who's got two black right now.
Somebody that has two black cans right now.
That's two fifty-eight.
Yeah. You could spend a lot of time looking at this slide and comparing. If somebody right now, eh, this is, this is the number that I pulled out myself. If somebody's got two garbage cans right now and they switch to one garbage can and one recycling, there's your, there's your four forty-seven, um, savings off of the two garbage can status quo number. Twenty-eight sixty-one down to twenty-four fourteen. If somebody's already doing one garbage and one recycling, they'd save even more. They they'd save an eight forty-two on. Okay, the long and short of it is us doing a recycling program is cheaper for residents that's recycling than ACE. It's also cheaper than current residents that have two black cans. But that assumes people making that choice to change how they're operating. Yeah.
And you go back, they're giving us the ten percent reduction for our diversion if we participate in this, freeing that from Wasatch Integrated.
I'm glad you bring that up. I only included that ten percent reduction on the tipping fee, um, on the.
In the last.
On the last.
Off.
Yeah. Uh, I put ten percent as an estimate. Wasatch Integrated said, uh, it could be up to the fifteens. That's kind of a normal amount. To your point, Joel, how much is actually diverted from the garbage can into a they're saying that it's typically around fifteen percent. And I put an estimate at ten percent.
I'm a household of two. And we fill a recycling can every, every time.
But.
I'm a household two.
They're still having to go through it, take everything out of it, and only about fifteen percent of what is actually in there.
I would say it's ninety percent.
No, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying that of what's currently in the garbage can, fifteen percent is reduced into the recycling. That's the reduction rate that they would give us.
They're doing it on style.
They're giving us fifteen percent reduction. What they're charging.
Yeah, and whatever that actual amount of diversion is, whatever percentage is that we would generate, that would be the actual diversion discount that would be given off of the tipping fee. So, one last slide, and this is because Robinson Waste gave us this option. Cause we asked the question about, well, our, is our garbage hauling rate gonna go up in July? And they said, yes, let's get that too, yeah. But they gave us an option, rather than following our RFP of three-year contract, they said if we were willing to do a five-year contract, then they would hold our hauling rates for two years. This July one and next July one, there would not be that CPI index applied to the rate until twenty twenty-seven. So the three-year contract versus the five-year contract, and I simply put it in terms of one of the options, not all of them, cause that would have gotten messy. So there's two benefits. Over here on the right side, um, they'll hold the rate, which if you didn't calculate it on those other slides, they're increasing the first garbage can rate twenty-four cents a month and second has nine cents a month. That's the hauling increase from current rate to July one rate. And then they would reduce that two dollars and fifty cent charge per can down to one dollar and seventy-five cents per month on the charge per can. But it would last five years instead of the three years. Which goes from the ninety dollars a can to about a hundred and five dollars a can for five years rather than three years. At the end of the three or the five, that charge is dropped off from the two fifty or the one seventy-five. So that's the discount. Uh, and you can see the comparison between the three-year and the five-year. The three-year is more expensive than the five-year per month. And that's them basically saying, we want to have a longer term agreement. Um, and we would like to to provide that service with a little bit more guarantee. So that's an option that Robinson presented.
Well, it's not made our trash and garbage, trash and recycling contracts at the same time instead of being staggered term.
Yes, it would line those up. The original intention was three-year contract with recycling, cause that is when our garbage contract ends and we could bid those out as a bundle program and see what comes in three years. We would essentially be saying, we'll turn that into a bundle program now and do it for five years. Again, they're presenting the option, um, that's something for the council to consider, so. I know that's a lot, fire hose about recycling, there's a lot of numbers up there. Again, this is kind of the the comparison of what residents might select, where they are now, what that would look like with the program or without.
It's important to know, and we want to talk with. Important to know that Robinson Waste would provide all of the materials, all of the.
Integrated.
Thank you.
So the stickers, you know.
Yes, Wasatch Integrated will do all of the stickers that fly, anything that they need. And they would give it, provide it to Robinson Waste, who would dispose that. They would have all of the days they need to pick up, anything in the garbage can.
No, any of your public notices, send it all out to everybody. Well, thank you, Michael, thank you for going to get this done. It helps me get a more, uh, informed decision by very early in the mission, so thank you for that.
I can send this out so that everybody will have that data to consider and have those numbers. Well, the updated, these are updated numbers.
They are a little updated.
That five-year option was only put in, uh, recently.
So when do we make a move? Do we want this to something?
We need to do it as soon as possible in order to get this June thirtieth thing.
So it's not today, it's cause Donna's agenda.
Right. I think we put that on the March eleventh agenda to make a decision.
Are we in around four March eleventh? So you can't see if we can.
Is there any additional information you'd like before that March eleventh meeting? You don't have to answer that right now, but if that comes, please let me know and we'll try to get whatever we need for you. BYU.
And just on this, my personal opinion is you either go in. Or you stay status quo. I mean, it's, it's going to cost the city money to not go all in. Yeah, I mean, we're not gonna be able, I mean, then we gotta go buy a whole bunch of cans ourselves. If we just do an opt-in, the, you know, Robinson isn't gonna do all that and only have three hundred people sign up. And so if we're gonna do. Not go all the way in, we stay status quo or see an opt or see in all the numbers.
I do have a question.
And this is something, by the way, I should just get thinking about, for those who have two black cans. And wanna give one up, now the city's going to have, am I like a surplus now of black cans? Thinking as most or a lot of people are gonna go from two black to one black. Does those may be allocated or those those cans gonna be surplus? What what's the plan?
I think we would just hold on to those and.
They take them and use them for spare parts if nothing else.
Yeah, as new development comes, we would use those, right? It would delay us needing to buy a new truckload of cans. We would, whatever ones are returned to us, we could use.
Yes, and the same with the blue cans. If we have, you know, three hundred people opt out, then we have three hundred new blue cans back at, at the works.
So we're just gonna stay with two blue, two black cans and then pick up one. That's, it's amazing how many have that. It's, it's crazy.
That's an important thing to note. This is a new level of service and for people that. Go from one can to one can and they're recycling, there is an increased cost, right? If people have two cans now and they just switch one into recycling, there's a savings, but. This is new service and some people would have increased costs because of that, depending. But they can choose to opt out if you do opt out. I think looking at the numbers, we were about half and half the city had a second can.
Oh, really?
It was about eleven hundred. I'm covering this up, but on our very first slide on the background information, I should have pointed that out. We have twenty two hundred first cans and about eleven hundred second cans. And then three hundred people that are from the population of the East. There you go. Uh, one final thing for me to quick, this is gonna be the end of of the retreat. Um, just the last slide to show what does it look like from a budget process moving forward. Um, we are scheduled for committee meetings the first couple of weeks in March. That's coming up here soon. Brett's doing work to be prepared for those discussions based on retreat conversations. We'll, we'll have those. We are tentatively planned to have two different work sessions, uh, on budget, uh, in April. After the committee meeting, we'll bring that forward to the council to discuss and then we can, um. Again, just have work session style on budget on both of those. Um, the tentative adoption or the bud, adopting of the tentative budget has to take place in May, right? Stay long. And then the adoption of the final budget is in June, pending a truth and taxation hearing if that's decided itself.
But that's the plan right now.
That's the, that's what the budget draft is, but I think through the committee meetings and those work sessions, that'll be determined whether that's. Gonna happen or not.